...... surgery. Great.
Oh. Don't you tell me about surgery.
All right. Let's call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are moving on to number four. Do we have any resident comments and/or questions? I'm seeing...Nick, anything? Oh, you're not a resident. Just throw your pen at me. Any reports? No reports. I'm seeing no reports. None. We have a public hearing to open...could I get a motion to open our public hearing for the MS4 annual stormwater presentation? Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let's move on to Mr. Dan Boiam.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome.
Yes. Every year at this time, we have your annual meeting for the MS4 permit. And tonight, we'll run through some of the information related to that. So who is involved with stormwater management, regulation, and Carver? And as you can see from this slide, there's the federal programs that is monitored by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. They've been delegated to be in charge of that. There's the watershed organizations, which is Carver County WMO and Lower Minnesota River. And then there's the state of Minnesota, which has Met Council, Department of Natural Resources, and Bowser. The documents that impact municipal operations here in Carver is the MS4 permit, watershed management plans and rules, as well as your surface water management plan. The origins of the MS4 permit started with Environmental Protection Agency back in 1972 and the Clean Water Act, and they delegated local authority to the MPCA. And the MPCA administers the MS4 program, and that includes the city of Carver. And if you recall, back in 2014, you were kind of extended your permit from...way back from 2003, 2004. The six basic minimum control measures of the MS4 permit are public education and outreach, public participation and involvement, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site water runoff control, and that's the one that I think, over the years, has been the issue that the city has had to deal a lot with. Pulse construction stormwater management and pollution prevention and good housekeeping for municipal operations. Here's a picture of some of the examples of pollutant sources. The upper left is the organic waste with leaves and grass clippings. The upper right is illicit discharges that can get to your storm sewer system. As I mentioned before, the bottom left is construction runoff when there's storm events and you have open soils. And the last one in the bottom right is chemical applications with fertilizers, salt, et cetera. This is a detail that was put together a few years ago, just kind of helping to educate the public on some of the setback requirements from stormwater ponds, and that's something that is part of your MS4 program. And so the various things that the city does to comply with the MS4 permit is you have partnerships with watershed districts and other MS4s. You have your city ordinances and your SWIP requirements. You've created a surface water or storm sewer system map, as well as stormwater-related brochures and articles. You have this annual meeting every year to get feedback from the public if there's any questions. You do inspections on illicit discharge construction in your MS4 system. Public Services does street sweeping and staff training. And then you finally, at the end of...end of June, you submit your MS4 annual report. Some of the additional MS4 tasks that were added back in 2014 are listed on this sheet. And in general, you've been...staff has been working through all of those items. And here's a few more, and those are all getting done. And finally, we get to any questions that the public may have or the council may have. We kind of document them, and we submit those at the end of the month with your annual report. So I'll stop at this time.
The only question I have is, with all of this, and I know that we keep up in compliance on a yearly and weekly, monthly basis, do we have any concerns in how we're moving forward as a city?
No.
Was that...Nick, you might want to write that down. That was a one-word answer from Dan. All right. Good. Thank you. I'm guessing that there's nothing from the public. Justin, how are you? Anything from the public on the MS4? All right. No action is needed. Just an update right now?
Yes.
All right. Could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. There's a motion to close the public hearing. In a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are moving on to our consent agenda.
I'll second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to unfinished business. Anything? We are on to Mr. Voss. Our 2015 audit conducted by Abdo...is it Ike? Ike. Eck. Ike and Myers. And this is a individual who's been with us for quite some time, and he has exactly three and a half minutes.
Well, in those three and a half minutes, you know, it's nice being here when it's this kind of audit presentation. What you're going to hear from me is a theme...
Excuse me. Could you just introduce yourself real quick and speak into the microphone?
Well, for how high it was, I kind of thought I need to stand up. Sometimes it's tough to tell when I sit, standing, sitting.
Looks like you're standing to me. I hear you.
Thanks. Thanks. Well, as Mayor Webb said, I have been with the firm and on this audit for 10-plus years. It's been a pleasure working out here, seeing the growth, the expansion, the improved financial condition of the city, strong compared to your own targets, as well as your peers. And that's going to be an echoed theme throughout this year's presentation as well, giving clean audit opinion. And what you have in front of you is two books. One's your financial statements. You know, that's got that blue cover, be all, end all. That's what we're here to give, is that clean opinion. It's called the unmodified opinion. What I'll be going through for the purpose of the presentation is a management letter. I haven't been a manager for Abdalik and Myers for over five years now. I've been doing the presentation a few years, so you'll have to forgive me if it feels tired and same old, same old. So I'll try to hit the high points through this presentation.
For the record, tired, same old, same old means that our financial staff is doing a great job and that we don't have any issues. So please, be tired.
Be tired. Sounds good. What you'll note through this is that there's items that aren't in here when, compared to a city, a lot of cities around the metro, under that 5,000 population such as yourself, it's not uncommon to have segregation of duties, issues, where just trying to have enough bodies to keep checks and balances in place. That's not an item in your audit report as a finding. From what we evaluated for staff, who's doing what, and what council's involvement in, and keeping things in place and reducing risk to what you can, you don't have that finding. That's unique. Coming out for the audit prep, questions that get asked during the year, there's a lot of activity, a lot of growth, a lot of new debt issued, a lot of projects on how capital is a street. Is it a water improvement? Is it a sewer line? How that all gets identified for your audit to be in the right bucket for what you're supposed to oversee and say things are going, how we say they should be going for a project? We don't have those adjustments. That's unique for the amount of activity that you have, you know, year-end. It's not uncommon, and we have had findings years ago of just the timing of when a contractor says, hey, you owe me this amount related to the work I did through December. Those situations, but all of the accounting was in place, no adjustments coming in for the audit, you know, great quality job on the audit prep side, no findings, no issues there. The one item that we do have as a finding, it's preparation of financial statements. It's the same finding we've had, well, every year that I've been out here and we've been required to say it. It's very common, probably over 90% under that 5,000 population have this finding. It's very uncommon not to. It's just the cost benefit of having enough bodies in place to prepare your own financial statements. That cost benefit isn't usually lining up with worthwhile to get rid of it. But that's the one item, and it's a very common item that we do have in the audit as far as controls, that type of matter.
Just so...let me just back up so that we can put...I like to get things in layman's terms. You're saying that of all the things that we've had in terms of conditions and what other cities may or may not incur, we have literally one condition, and that's one that 90% of cities have, and that's preparing of the financial statements?
Correct.
Everything else, our financial department has gotten prepared and into alignment with what you're looking for, and we are sitting absolutely dandy in terms of the audit.
Dandy might not have been the word I was going for, but I like it. Yes, I would agree.
Layman's terms. I'm just a layman guy.
Yes.
Outstanding. Thank you.
One thing that I will mention, on page three, something new for this year, we've talked about it in the past, of this new reporting and regulation that was going to be coming up was this GASB 68. I recognize, I do it for a living, so it's interesting to me. It's not necessarily interesting to everybody else. But the impact was just, you know, imagine, you know, we all have social security. Here is this, you know, state pension. We're not having to book social security on our financials, but for some reason, the standard said, hey, for what everybody's participating in this cost-sharing pool for pensions, it's got to get on the employer's books. You know, the state's not the employer, so everybody has to get their piece of the pie. Where it relates nicely is if we weren't in this situation, you know, if you went over to Michigan, for example, that every city is on its own, every county's on its own, whatever you set aside for pension, you have to set aside funds for it, kind of like what we do for our vacation and sick. In that situation, makes sense. I have an obligation to pay this out. In Minnesota, it's unique because we're only going to pay in what the state funding rate says we're going to. None of that's changing with this new standard. We have something now on our books for our portion of the para's unfunded pension liability. But, I mean, to be honest, it's not going to impact your budget. It's not expected to impact the funding rate, anything different. It just impacts about two pages of your financial statements and about 20 pages of your footnotes. So it's a thicker paperweight for you now going forward, if you need it for your financials. But that's...the overall for Carver was about $565,000. You couldn't issue debt and pay it off if you wanted to, just to tell the state, hey, we're good, don't come knocking on our door, we don't want to see this. Doesn't work that way. It's just a reporting liability, and it'll have fluctuation going forward. But it'll be something...it was new this year. Will be consistent going forward. A nice point to kind of echo with that theme, on the bottom of page three, is this corrected and uncorrected misstatements? That's in line with that comment about audit prep, what your staff is doing. There's not, you know, a list of five, 10 bullet points of things that we had to come in for the audit and adjust. You know, it echoes that the information you're getting on a month-to-month basis, on a quarterly basis, to make your decisions, it's in line with what we see. We're not having to correct anything once we come out here for the audit, and it's all properly reported. Outside of just the internal controls element, I did want to hit on some high points of the financial results, starting on page five. For your general fund, you have a fund balance policy identified to be 40% of the next year's budget expenditures. Great policy, you know, when you just think of cash flow, your main source of revenue, taxes not coming in until June, just from that perspective, you want to have that 40 to 50% set aside. At the end of the year, looking at that chart on the bottom, your percentage was nearly 65% at the end of 2015. And it was at 56% at the end of 2014. So there was just improvement within that minimum target. One of the contributing factors is just that red line that you see there, a very consistent budget over the last five years. And considering the growth, and it'll kind of echo into other tables and charts that we'll see later on, to have that consistency, but still maintain a strong fund balance, is at and above what we would recommend of that 40 to 50% as well. On page six, we kind of see where that increase comes in overall, within your budget. What, I mean, what you're shooting for, what you're identifying as a council, what you approved, was about a $7,000 increase overall. The year ended up in about a $170,000 increase. It was a combination of a lot of factors. It's not able to just, you know, put the pin on the wheel and say, this is the reason. But primarily, if you look on the top right, within revenues and expenditures, $94,000 revenues, more than expected, out of a $2 million budget, you know, that's less than 5% off overall from trying to hit that mark. $64,000...
Are you saying good budgeting?
Good budgeting.
Okay.
Yep. What you'll see is that out of that, trying to keep at those high points, two items bulleted on the bottom for what we'd say is that's significant. Within the revenues, $95,000 overall. The biggest piece was just over $71,000 coming in from FEMA reimbursing for costs with flood control. So where you're going to see that on the flip side, too, is within that expenditures, that you had unbudgeted roughly $56,000 for flood control unbudgeted. It's like offset pretty significant. So the overall between those two, and that last bullet point there, within the public safety function, building inspection was under budget by $38,000. And then we also, within the fire department, were under $31,000 from budget. On pages seven and eight, outside of that comparison of just what was budgeted for the year, we like to do a chart showing that trend, kind of like what we're looking at, fund balance, what's our trend been for that comparative? What have we seen on revenue and expenditures within the general fund? And we see on the chart, really overall, one significant line item that shows any change here, that green line item that encompasses other. Outside of your taxes and license and permits, which are your main revenues for the general fund, this other had a category which had changed. It's exactly in line with what we were talking about, the budget. It's related to FEMA for the reimbursement. So within that other category, intergovernmental, it decreased. But what you'll see on the next page, on page eight, public safety for the flood control also decreased. So they mirror each other on that change for what happened between 14 and 15. One item I do want to note on this page eight as well, on the top right, what we've done is we've broken down that second to right column for Carver, for what you have for population, what would that break out within these categories per capita? And then we've also compiled, going through the state auditor, getting all of the audit reports across the state, everybody within this same population, 2,500 to 10,000, put together that as a peer comparison. We're not saying that this is anything for direction, but just kind of serve as a benchmark. And what you note there is that overall, your expenditures for the year, $481 per capita. On average, same peer comparison, $571 per capita. So you're at about 84%. And one thing to note, too, is that we don't include a comparison there for transfers out. So factoring that out, you're spending about $110 less per resident...or per capita, not necessarily per household, but per capita than that peer group comparison.
That's good.
Yes.
You can say dandy.
I can say that. Dandy.
I like that.
All right. Outside of the general fund, page nine, we see, kind of outside of your utility funds and outside of your general fund, here's where a lot of the projects and a lot of the other activity that goes on within Carver is summarized all on this page for page nine. Within special revenue funds, what you'll see is the LCDA grant, Carver Crossing, you know, that's the big part of that increase, that's $742,000. That's because there's a $750,000 loan to Met Council. You know, it just basically flowed through Carver. For reporting purposes, it looks like an increase to fund balance, but that's just because we can't show the debt side of it in the fund itself. So really, it's all offset and no real significant change to the city. On the project side, a lot of activity on that bottom table. Couple points there within the bullets, your first...that first line item within a major fund, 2015 street improvements, that's the new project, you know, off of issuing bonds of nearly $675,000, just over that. Your ending amount still at the end of the year is $180,000. You know, that's reflecting the unspent bond proceeds, which are going to go towards the remaining costs to finalize the project in 2016. Another fund, that third one, General Capital, shows an increase of $357,000. Really relates to $370,000 of bonds issued, just haven't done the equipment yet. That'll happen going forward. So it's just a timing of when the bonds are issued, when the activity will happen.
Placeholder?
Yep. Park develop...or park development, kind of in the middle there, $243,000 increase overall as a result of park dedication fees and the activity, the developer agreement developments that you have going on for the year. Another one that I wanted to mention, just to keep an eye on, because outside of, yes, here's increases, here's a lot of significant activity, we also, as the audit, want to make sure to point out, keeping an eye on anything with that deficit. You know, more from your perspective, do we have a plan in place of how we're going to cover those deficits going forward? Up on the top, that's that park and ride transit for about $49,000 deficit. And on the bottom, Carver Elementary School, for how that's $73,000. Kind of placeholders as well, just as the activity is going on, just waiting to make those transfers from other funds. Here's where they lie at the end of 2015 without those transfers. Page 10. What we have here is the debt service funds to finance those projects. Where we are overall for the year, we'll see bonds outstanding of 6.6 million, and a chart on the bottom showing what those scheduled payments are over the next 10 years. 2016, you'll see a higher amount, but that's due to the refunding bonds issued. So there's a little asterisk there saying that, yes, we're over $1 million this year compared to about $600,000 for the next eight, nine years. But that's because we already have 533 sitting aside at the end of the year to pay that. So what basically it means, very consistent amounts over the next eight, nine years as far as special assessments, tax levy that you need to keep a track of. In the next three pages, 11, 12, 13, we have similar charts showing the activity of these funds. What the charts are hopefully designed to be is, I totally understand that, yep, I'm an accountant, to throw just numbers at you, it can...it gets lost in translation.
It's really irritating.
I am with the charts.
Says the bookkeeper.
So what we have on these next three pages is kind of getting the feedback from councils yourself, you know, some of your staff, of trying to give something that paints a little bit better picture. And so what this is designed is kind of be like a mini utility rate study. You know, you want to know that are rates at where they need to be to cover our operations, to cover our debt, to be able to fund the capital projects as they're coming in. So when you look at this top chart, the rightmost column is all of your cash coming in. And the column next to it on the left is the cash going out, and trying to separate the main activity within there. What it means is, with your rates coming in, that's the blue on the right. Ideally, you want that to cover your operations. You got to pay your staff, you got to pay your consultants, you want to be able to pay your debt. That's the green. So the question that we tend to echo throughout here is, is the blue covering the gray and the green? Here's where Carver being...
Covering the green?
Is the blue more than the gray and the green combined?
Okay.
Yep. And what you're going to see throughout each of these is the uniqueness of Carver, that with the amount of activity that you have, you actually have identified significant amount of connections coming in, that that's a main source of revenue as well. So the rates aren't necessarily just going to cover the blue or the gray and the green, but that's known, that's identified, that's not unexpected. And so what it ends up seeing is that chart on the bottom of the overall cash balance is steady, is strong compared to that minimum target, that red line of, you know, what our next year's debt payments are and our operations. So for this year's activity, you see a significant orange line here, and you're going to see it on the next pages as well. That's kind of like that placeholder as well for that refunding bonds. You know, when it doesn't hap...when the payment doesn't happen in the exact same year, it just goes into this escrow account. And so where you see it is in that bottom chart there, that gray bar, that's that cash from the refunding, just waiting and holding until we can call it out and pay off the old debt. So really, where you see it more is that, how's that blue look compared on the bottom for overall cash balance compared to that red line? And that's where we see that strong balance, you know, covering that minimum target. Page 12.
So tying that back to our fund balance for, say, water fund, where the blue covers considerably the red line, which is the target balance?
Yep.
On top of a 65%, 64% fund balance, which typically is rainy day stuff, we're sitting well with our fund balances that we wouldn't need to ever really, at this stage, consider going into our budgetary fund balance as well, or our reserve, excuse me.
As far as general fund, taking that, right now, your cash balances are sufficient for the funds themselves to cover their operations, their projects, their debt. But, I mean, the caution always is, with a utility rate study, that's going to identify future projects. So, you know, if you have 2 million cash, but you have 2 million to be spent over the next five years for new improvements, new inspect...expansion, you're not going to just be able to use cash reserves, you might still have to issue debt to cover those.
But at the same time, you don't want to have too much in your fund balance, and so you're charging too much to not actually adequately cover what you're covering, you have too much.
Right. I mean, that's the tightrope to walk. And as far as, when you look at the last four years within each of these funds, you're going to see that you've been maintaining a pretty similar cash balance for that target.
So from a professional accountant's standpoint?
You're in line with what we would recommend.
Thank you.
Kind of right with that general fund as well.
Thank you.
Yep. So same story here, sewer fund, page 12. You see that big orange, that's that refunding. It's reflected in the gray, where you see the total blue, very consistent all four years, as well as a consistent red line for what you're at for your sewer fund compared to operations, compared to debt. Storm on page 13. Here's where you'll see similar, big orange coming in for the overall cash. But what you see here is, within your storm, more significant improvement in that blue on the bottom, on your total cash, of how much your cash is not related to that refunding. So significant improvement. The red line goes up only because, as far as the refunding, a portion of it gets paid 2016, some of it's still not delayed until 2017. So here, it increases for storm, but that's because it'll just use that gray right away in 2016. The other two funds won't use it until 2017.
But in this...but in this fund, the majority of the years since 2013, 14, and 15, the blue has covered the green and the gray, which is obviously very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
So on page 14, again, here comes back to that feedback. You know, we appreciate the feedback, and the common question we get most often is, how are we comparing to our neighbors? How are we comparing to others? And so what we've done is, right in line with that general fund comparison, we took the same ratios compared to everybody across the state, population 2,500 to 10,000, and show that on this chart here. What we have is debt to assets, this first ratio, this is saying, you know, overall, between cash, between investments, all of our capital, how are we looking compared to that same debt to fund that capital, to have our accounts payable year-end? And at the end of the year, you're at 33%. It's an increase from last year. You know, yeah, you issued some debt refunding, but the overall increase is a large part due to that GASB 68, that piece that I said, hey, it only impacts like two pages? Well, this is one off a timing that there's no asset, it's just that net pension liability, that 565. Going forward, you'll see kind of a more consistent comparison, but otherwise, this percentage would have gone down even with the debt that you issued this year for refunding. The peer group, you'll see that go up probably close to 38%, 40% now going forward as well. Because there...we don't have that yet for 2015, off of being the first year for that net pension liability. The next two, debt service coverage, debt per capita, similar, that debt comparison, debt focus, that first...that second debt service coverage, where you're at 22%, that's a good overall ratio, saying what we were just talking about before, of having that orange from connection fees and other sources, that's what that is as far as a ratio. That's what that is as far as a ratio. That's where you're very unique compared to others within this peer group. It doesn't mean we're in a bad position, what we just looked at on those previous three pages, strong cash balance compared to operations, compared to debt. You're just getting there off of other sources, mainly connections and new development. And that's where that debt per capita, we have an increase this year. But keep in mind, that's including refundings that are all going to be rolling off in 16 and 17. And so overall, you have a decrease for the year compared to 2014, if not for the refundings. One that I don't love, it's on here for a ratio, is that taxes per capita. You know, it's a definitely a focus, how are we doing compared to others? But what's so tough about this comparison, this population 2,500 to 10,000? That's including everybody outer metro, that's getting a significant amount of LGA. It's including people over 5,000 in the metro that are getting MSA funding in order to cover projects and not having to have as much taxes. And so it's almost a better comparison to look outside of that, that next line.
MSA, Minnesota State Aid?
Yep.
Thank you.
That current expenditures per capita, be all, end all, outside of LGA, outside of MSA funds, we still all have to have streets, we still all have to keep us safe with our police or fire. How are we doing compared to others of what we're spending? And that's where you see your, for 2014, 2015, both roughly $520 per capita. Compared to the peer group, up to 674 at the end of 2014. You're less than 80% of that peer group within the last two years. Be all, end all.
That's telling, that's the telling one for me.
Yep. The last three, not to get into details there, but good illustration for Carver's uniqueness of the growth. You know, that peer group, that very consistent amount, what they have capital assets compared to depreciate. And you're, you know, 25% more than the peer group because of the recent activity, the recent growth. And the nice one to tie it back into is that you're that much stronger for the growth, the capital assets. But your debt to assets has been less than the peer group each of the four years. So you're growing without having to heavily burden your population.
What, I'm sorry, what did you just say?
A significant amount of growth without a large burden, increased burden compared to others for your population.
Thank you, I like, I like hearing that.
It's dandy.
It's dandy, ah, well played.
The rest of the management letter has a bunch of information, future accounting standards, but nothing to get into significant detail. None of it will have the amount of impact we had for that portion of the pension stuff that we did this year. We'll be in touch with staff to make sure everything goes as smooth as it has. You know, it was a really good year, we appreciate the work that they put into it. We really like the questions that they asked during the year to just be on top of planning. Love being the resource, and so wanted to say thanks to them. Thank you for the opportunity to provide your audit and open it up if there's any questions. Not from Dan, but just from.
Well, I, again, job well done, and certainly Kathy Elke, our financial coordinator. I like to call you, because you're not an accountant, you're not a bookkeeper, you're a financial coordinator for us. And I think that the communication between our CPA firm, as well as between Brent, and what the council's trying to accomplish, kind of funnels down to Brent, who then works with Kathy and does a fantastic job. And as almost always, puts us in a position to succeed and to be able to stand up here and say that things are doing extremely well. Obviously, that couldn't happen without Brent and you, Matt, but at the end of the day, none of that could happen without Kathy Elke. And we just want to say thank you, Kathy, for a job well done.
Thank you, Kathy.
Again. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Nice work. Could I entertain a motion, please, to approve the 2015 audit as prepared?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2015 audit as presented.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Thank you again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That was about 27, and I think maybe you should buy her a drink.
Have a good evening.
Yep, enjoy. Let us move to Mr. Boyham. We are moving on to the pedestrian underpass in Mr. 9.2.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you are aware, with the meeting tonight and the packet information, plans have been updated based on council and staff feedback. We've received Carver County and MinDOT State Aid approval of the plans. We are, as we discuss in our packet information, we're, for the schedule on this project, because we're bidding it at this time of year, we're giving more time for the contractor to pick when they will actually start the work. And so we're anticipating that will allow for contractors who might have work that's going right now to be able to start up in late summer or fall on the project. So that is something we're doing to encourage more bidders. For the detour on the project, during the construction of the underpass, because we're around 18 to 19 feet deep, we won't be able to keep County Road 11 opening during that time when they're placing the pipe underneath the road. So we'll be using County Road 40 to County Road 61 as the official detour. In the packet, we also, or in the project bid items, we have two alternates. One is an alternate that is a conduit that would go up in the upper corner of the pedestrian underpass if the city ever decided to put in cameras, if they had some issues, that would be set up and placed at this point in time. Also, there's, you can either pave the trail through the culvert, or you can stop it at the culvert. And so depending on how prices came in, we had that as a, as an alternate that we may not pave the trail through the underpass and just use the bottom of the underpass as the trail.
Dan, how long would County Road 11 be shut down?
We have it for three weeks.
Ooh.
And, and, I mean, we've heard from contractors that they can, you know, some of them can get it done more than likely faster than that. But we're, we're leaving that in there to hopefully give you the best options for bids.
Just a, just a weekend.
Yeah, I, I've heard.
On County Road 6.
Way up there and up north.
On County Road 6, at Windsong.
Right.
It's a weekend.
The estimated project costs are 440,000. And that council action that we're looking for tonight is a motion to approve the plans and specs and set a bid opening for 10:00 a.m. on June 30th, 2016.
I haven't heard a motion yet. Does anybody entertain a motion, please?
I want to entertain a motion to approve the plans and specifications for the pedestrian underpass and set the bid opening time and date for 10:00 a.m. on June 30th, 2016.
I'll second.
There's, there's a motion and a second, any other discussion? The only thing I'd like to add is that, I think, I think it, I know we have it as an option for the conduit for a camera, but I would deem that relatively important, so make sure that we keep an eye on that. Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to number nine, 9.3, JPA Kasaw 40 turnback, Mr. Boyham.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the city of Carver, and some of the past council members would know from, from in the early 2000s, but city of Carver and Carver County started talking back at that period of time about turnback of County Road 40 to the city of Carver. And it came up when, the first project that it came up on was when Broadway, streetscaping was looking at being done. The, the city needed a variance, and the county kind of supported the city in that variance request because they felt at some point in time, County Road 40 would be turned back to the city and we'd be kind of in charge of it. Also, it came up on the MCS interceptor in the Main Street, specifically Main Street West, where the county doesn't typically allow bump outs to be placed in their right of way. And the city expressed wanting to have some kind of protected parking areas, and so bump outs were allowed. And, and that was kind of the second time when it was talked about. Turnback, once again, is where the county turns over the road to the city for ownership permitting, maintenance.
So Dan, just, and I apologize to interrupt you, but I want to make sure that we don't get too far ahead. Just for purposes of people watching, right now, we do not maintain or control County Road 40 coming through town, all the way out to Kasaw 11.
Correct, I mean, there.
It's owned and maintained by the county.
Right, and there is a maintenance agreement that the city does do some maintenance, but they're reimbursed by the county for.
So we're paid for that if we do it. And this essentially says, all right, it's, it's now the city of Carver's, once we become a Minnesota State Aid city.
Yeah, municipal state aid city.
I say Minnesota all the time.
Yeah, that's okay, I.
Thanks, Dan.
Yeah. So, um, once you reach 5,000, right, then you have the opportunity to get some of that municipal state aid funding that will help you with maintenance as well as construction.
Population of 5,000.
Right.
Question. I have a question.
Please.
Years ago, when we thought we were going to get County Road 40 turned over to the city of Carver, the county went and fixed it, you know, made it all nice. Are they going to fix it again before we get it back?
Right, that would be part of the negotiations with the county as.
Okay, let's make sure we negotiate that.
Right.
Start out with a nice road.
Right, and as you are aware, when the, when the interceptor, let me work on, I suppose you guys got your nice screen up there and. Well, this, my light isn't working, but, um, but right, the, the street in like 2012 was overlaid, you know, from, you know, kind of Hickory.
Is that 2012?
Yeah.
Wow, seems longer ago than that.
Yeah. It was in that range, you know, they started the work in 2009, and then they went through the downtown. And then eventually, that got done, and the next year, 2010, they started working their way out west. And then 2011, they finally got out to the.
No, 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 when it came downtown, it was 2011.
Okay.
But, right, that is part of the discussions, whenever a road is turned back, the two agencies discuss the condition.
Are you saying that they actually did the portion that, that comes off of 61 and into the downtown in 2012?
No, I was getting.
Just the downtown area?
I was getting to more the west side, so from County Road 11 going east into town.
Musa Project.
Right, with the interceptor.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
They went up to the Depot Park area with that project, but everything going from Depot Park going out wasn't part of that MCS project.
Right. Okay.
So in 2007, there is a letter that kind of discusses this intent between the city and the county. And, and it talked about achieving, once the city achieves that municipal state aid status and negotiate in mutually, excuse me, mutually acceptable terms, that would be done. And the county kind of included this letter in their, the joint powers agreement on the MCS project. And so they're kind of anticipating that. It, it did come up when the staff was meeting on the County Road 61 corridor study, some of the language came up. And, and so I know that's kind of the reason for updating the council right now, is that it is something that the county's thinking about. We anticipate, you know, we aren't 5,000 yet, but the city staff and county staff will continue to work on this issue and eventually bring back a joint powers agreement to both agencies for discussion and approval.
So we have no action required on that, simply an update.
Thanks for that update.
Do we know when we're going to start that process?
No.
No.
I asked Dan to bring this, there is, I think there is some confusion just by how people discuss this issue, that the city was just going to receive the turnback once we hit 5,000, and that there already was a joint powers agreement negotiated. That's not the case.
Right.
So as we approach a population of 5,000, we'll need to have that on our radar to start negotiating with the county on what those improvements might be, a bill and overlay, or, you know, well, Dan, Brian, and I will sit down and bring a, a plan to the council to review once we get to that point.
Right on, thank you. Uh, let's move on, geez, Dan, three in a row, 9.4. This is cool, 9.4 is a certified levy study, I want you to start there, Dan.
Thank you. Some people would say, I was trying not to do this, but, you know, my middle initial is a D. And, and so, Dan, Dan D. Boyham, and so it's a dandy, dandy thing. Just trying to avoid that, but I.
No, 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 you obviously were not trying to avoid that.
I waited till my last time of talking here, but, yes. The Army Corps of Engineers. So the Army Corps of Engineers contacted city, ooh, I'm sorry. Contacted city staff here recently about doing the feasibility study on the costs associated with becoming a certified levy.
And I, Dan, I want to stop you right there, and I, again, I apologize, I keep interrupting you. But I also want to point out, and I want to emphasize, that the Army Corps of Engineers contacted the city, instead of the city contacting the Army Corps of Engineers as we have in the past, so I think that's really good news. Thank you.
Sure. And, yeah, this, this picture up in the corner of the, of the slide shows the Spring Creek Levy along Spring Creek. You know, the two blocks between Fourth and Main, and then the Main levees east and west of Spring Creek. But the city had for a while been requesting this study, as, as, as some of you are aware. For a while there, we were sending letters to our, our federal representatives for funding. And so it was one of these unfunded items that the Corps kept encouraging the city to send those letters. And so it's, it's a good, good discussion and a good contact, as the mayor mentioned. The city administrator, public services director, and myself met with the Corps back in May 18th, and we provided some background and history of our levy to some of the Corps representatives that are going to be working on this next slide, a federal interest determination. And, and this is something they have to do before they would do a full-fledged study. They, they end up doing some initial analysis and collecting information. They're actually going to come out and do a tour of the levy. And they're, they have to send that information or this FID onto their division. And they are anticipating hearing back in September if, if the feasibility study is warranted. The city staff has put together information for the Corps on like the 100-year floodplain, or infrastructure, both public and private, in the 100-year floodplain. Some past levy improvement information, as well as some flood elevations from our recent floods that we shared. Once again, if a study is warranted, this is kind of the financial part of things. The first 100,000 is covered by the Corps, and then any costs above that are split between the Corps and the city. And so I think once we get to that stage, we'll, we'll have more information to share with the council on, on those costs. And I think with that, that ends my update on the certified levy study.
As far as updating the levy or understanding the ramifications of not doing anything or adding a levy, this is some of the best news we've had in a very long time. Especially with the, the finances and having an actual willful partner, again, I think is fantastic. I'm glad we stayed on top of that. Well done. We are now to. Oh, yeah, sorry, does anybody else have any questions?
Typically, what would a study, you know, the first 100,000 is federally, the feds pick that up, or the, the Army Corps. What are the, what are the studies typically run? Kind of ballpark?
500 grand.
We, we did hear a number like that from the Corps, but I, yeah, I think these kind of studies can be several hundred thousand dollars to go through. They actually, you know, go through and investigate things related to the levy, soil borings, et cetera. So they are more extensive than a typical feasibility type study that we do at the city level.
Well, and, and I think what they asked us to take into consideration when we were approaching them was to look at approximately 500,000 if we were paying for it. I'm going to guess it's between 350 and 5 if we're combined with it. So it, it, it ain't cheap, but 100,000 and then splitting it certainly is far more palatable than 500 right out of our coffers. Does anybody have any other questions, comments? We have no action needed, you'll keep us posted, and we'll look forward to that. We are now to City Council Communications. Mrs. Monroe.
We had a planning commission meeting on Thursday, May 19th. We had a planning commission meeting on Thursday, May nineteenth. We had a public hearing concerning the elementary school, uh, on four items, which were all passed unanimously by the three members that were there. Uh, rezoning from agricultural to public institutional, uh, the preliminary plat, site plan, and the final plat were all approved. And then we also had another public hearing, um, to amend the city subdivision regulations and zoning ordinance related to financial security, securities for, um, other governmental entities in Carver County and school entities.
Outstanding.
Also was.
Approved unanimously.
Unanimously.
There are only three members?
Uh, no, just that night.
Uh, Ms. Monroe, all right, is that it?
Uh, yep, I think so.
Ms. Roy again?
We have not had a HBC meeting since the last meeting. I did pass down these, uh, just as a reminder. Carver and Minnesota is sponsoring a canoe trip on June nineteenth, seven thirty in the morning. Believe there, we can supply maybe one canoe. I think we've.
So you all have to bring, we have to bring our own canoes?
You, yes. I'm, I'm not sure. Last I heard, there was one left. So you might want to check.
You're going fast.
Yeah.
That's good.
And if you bring your own canoe, uh, drop it off in the Jordan side, and we'll give you a ride back to, or we'll give you a ride back from park. So if you, if you bring your own canoe, you don't have to worry about leaving your car because we'll make sure you get a ride. It's expected to be a three or four hour trip. River looks good now, and we'll go rain or shine unless it's dangerous.
Cool.
But it should be good. Ken Foreigner's address or contact information is on the bottom. He's the guy to contact if you're interested in going. Pretty much all I got.
Phew. Hank?
We haven't had a meeting since.
What kind of meeting? That's it? Red?
Uh, Carver County leaders have not met, uh, since the last meeting in April. We do have one coming up the end of June, I believe.
Standing. Mr. Merrick, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, just a few things. I wanted to thank Mike Tudor and Vicky. This is our first Granicus live web stream meeting.
We're live right now.
They spend a lot of time, uh, putting the software together and working with Granicus and getting trained. And I also want to thank Brian and his team for helping coordinate, moving the council chambers around maybe one more time.
Well, it doesn't look like they had to move much because it seems like it's all kind of the same. I'm just kidding. They had it all set up over here. They've moved it a number of times and we thank you.
I'll take the blame for that. But again, thanks to Brian, Vicky, and Mike for all their hard work on this.
Hey, just out of curiosity, from a kind of a social standpoint, did Brian make the call that we would end up moving things back from where you had them the first time?
I can't remember.
Okay, all right. You don't recall? Don't recall? Outstanding.
I, I would like to add one thing. Camdown, Carver Bluff Sparkway.
Good.
Yeah, it really looks good.
Sixth Street was nice also.
Okay. Um, I think it's high time that Jake, um, our new intern, I think you should probably come up and introduce yourself and tell us just a quick little bit about you. Did you know I was going to put you on the spot here? All right, well, welcome aboard, brother.
We expect you to give your biography.
Yeah, okay. Well, my name is Jake Hartman. I am from Bell Plain, Minnesota, so just down the road. And I'm currently a student at the University of St. Thomas, where I'll be a junior in the fall. Um, and my major is legal studies and business, and I'm glad to be here. And I love working with everyone so far.
Are you okay working for Johnny?
Um, it has its moments.
Welcome aboard, Jake.
Thanks.
You did well.
Welcome, Jake.
Um, does anybody have anything else they'd like to add before I ask for a motion to adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.